Good afternoon. Thank you for coming and being interviewed. I think I'll go down the DS here and everybody will introduce themselves.
Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor.
Chris Faraldi, Ward 4.
I'm Sterling Wilder, Ward 2.
All right, at large.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward 1.
Jeff Helgeson, Ward 3.
Dr. Trenae Tweedy, at large.
Randy Nelson, at large.
All right.
Okay, so I think we'll just start right off with some questions and I'll start to my left with Councilmember Nelson, please.
Good afternoon and thank you for applying and being here today for this interview.
It's been my pleasure.
Good, likewise. For many years, the Lynchburg City School Board repeatedly approves LCS administrative proposals and recommendations and budgets without substantially questioning or modifying those proposals. And in recent years, that's resulted in some ineffective outcomes. A chronic exodus of teachers, highly qualified professionals and administrators out of our division. Extensive declines in LCS student attendance and enrollment. Some material disconnects between teachers, their students, and students' families. And then inflated LCS budgets and financial inefficiencies. If you were a member of the LCS School Board, what would you do to hold the administration accountable to ensure that LCS might attain the goals and guidelines ingrained in its mission statement, every child, by name and by need, to graduation?
All right, thanks, sir. To answer that, I would say, as a school board for the administration, I would want to see every, well, the dollar amounts that they're requesting tied back to a specific goal or objective to meet. Everything should be able to be tied back to what the outcome for, that we expect to see from our, from our children. And whether it be graduation rates, whether it be standardized scores, averages, the dollar amounts that they're requesting should be able to be tied to those goals. And if they can't be tied to those goals, then they would have to, I would request that they explain, you know, why they are requesting money that doesn't, isn't tied to a specific mission, objective, or milestone that's going to be used to improve our, our children's educations.
Okay, thank you for that. What qualifications do you think you have that would enable you to initiate that expectation to fulfillment?
Thank you, sir. So, my background, I, I was in United States Air Force for 25 years. And as I was going through, I was a logistics officer in the United States Air Force. And when I was about the major, the 04 level, so about the 11 or 12 years in, my career field specifically chose me to go to the Pentagon and run and be in charge of my career field's education and training for the entire career field, to include the Guard and the Reserves. So, while I was there at the, at the Pentagon for, for about two years, I managed, I had to manage the budget, I had to, again, show the, in our, I'm trying to remember the acronym that we use, I haven't used it in a couple of years and I've lost it, but it's the Education and Training Plan that we have. So, you had to, here's our expectations of what logistics officers should be able to do. And here's the action plan and the education goals by beginner, intermediate, and advanced of what we expect each of those officers to be able to do, right? So, we had to lay that out. And again, at the Pentagon, everything is about money, right? So, I had to tie every mission objective and every learning objective to what, what the budget I was requesting. So, during that time, I actually was able to work with the Air Force Institute of Technology and get the, a nuclear support master's degree added to our institute, or master's degree program there. Supply chain management, because what we were operating off of was old, it was transportation, supply, so we updated it to logistics readiness, supply chain management, nuclear management. And so, we had to, I had to work with several of the, the Air Force Institute Technology professors and deans to create that curriculum there as well. So, all of that to say, when I departed for the first time, so I departed in 2012 out of the Pentagon, now I take that back, 2010, 2010 is when I left the Pentagon. We had, I was able to get through our first update that was approved by all the generals, the logistics generals in the United States Air Force since 2002. There had been no updates. So, that was my two-year mission, was to update all of those training guidelines. I was able to, like I said, increase the number of master's degree programs. I was able to get through the Education and Training Plan, approved by all the generals for an update. And I managed the University of Tennessee Certificate Program as well as part of that. So, I know it was a very long answer, but I had a lot of responsibilities there and from the strategic level to help, at the tactical level, to achieve specific milestones and standards that we expected of our officers.
Thank you. And be assured, I'm not adverse to long answers, as long as they give the information that's needed.
Well played, answered your question, sir.
Dr. Tweedy.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Same as you, ma'am.
Thank you. What is your knowledge of the curriculum that teaches history of our country and the public school system?
I was a product of the public school system here in Virginia. So, are you asking specifically what is taught as far as history? I mean, I know from-
What is the knowledge of your curriculum of the history, of teaching the history in our public-
Just from the, from the beginning of our, of our nation. I remember for US history, it was just from the beginning of our nation, all the way through current age and current day. It was, you know, from Christopher Columbus up to current-day education.
Okay. To follow up, do you believe the false narrative that CRT is being taught in our schools or that there is a push to teach it in our schools?
I have seen specific things that are, that would fall into the CRT. It's not named that, but I know it's, it falls into that program. I've, yes, ma'am.
Can you specify those things that you know of specifically?
Well, I've, for what I remember reading about Lynchburg specifically was, we were, it was, we were paying, we were trying to pay for specifically having several students receive training, racial diversity, or racial specific training to come back to their schools off of what they're taught. So, it was just, it was more a, an agenda-focused teaching rather than, you know, curriculum where you're, we're trying to, whether educate as far as math, science, history, English, the skills that we need in everyday life for, as business and what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you. You have an impressive resume and everything that I've looked through. Got a question with regarding Lynchburg City School staffing. So, Lynchburg City School staffing is the third highest staffing in the entire state. Lots of times, the bureaucrats, the superintendents give to school boards who are volunteers and they kind of have to rely on that information being accurate and maybe somewhat skewed or slanted for their purpose. But when we look at the fact that our staffing levels are the third highest in the state, if we would actually staff equivalent to about state average, that could save us about $8 million a year in the budget. For years, this has been baked into the cake. And for years, that means that teachers could have had a pretty good raise if you didn't have so many. You know, obviously, we can figure out if we can, you got 100 bucks and you can divide it, $10 a person for 10 people, or you can give everybody a raise and have four people do the job at $25. How would you look differently at the staffing ratios of our city school system? And how could you look, I guess, more critically and objectively rather than taking hook, line, and sink, or whatever the bureaucrats say?
Thank you for that question. So, for the staffing levels themselves, I would, I would have to imagine there is a standardized chart of, in order to teach or to get one student through, it takes X number of teachers. And I would, again, drawing to, I think, with the Councilman Nelson had said was, what, what are the staff doing specifically to, to enrich, improve, or help the student accomplish the goals? That's where we would need to tie the, the staff as well as to the teachers. If, again, if you have a lot of administrative overhead and very few teachers, then again, the, the student is the one missing out. So, that, I would, I would look at that ratio. And again, I would have to think there's a, some sort of a manpower standard that shows for, you know, like I said, for 100, for 50 students, it required this many teachers to get them through. So, I would just compare that to what, what actuality is and from there have discussions as to the why.
Thank you. The, you know, we've seen also, I guess, with the declining enrollment, we've lost about a couple thousand kids in the last couple decades. And with that, we still have the same number of schools. We're finally to the point, since you were talking about logistics, we're finally to the point of saying, okay, maybe we ought to do something. Lots of times, things move really slow in government, as you're very aware of in, in the Pentagon. What would you do as a school board member if you're looking at this analysis now?
I'm sorry.
With regarding the declining enrollment and with regarding having to, do you think we should build a brand-new school or do you think we've got plenty of capacity to close schools and-
I get what you're saying. Well, first off, you have to look at the, the condition of the infrastructure, I think, right? So, before you can make the, the recommendation of keeping a school open or closing it, what, what condition is it in to provide an environment to successfully teach students? And if you have a declining population of students and the same amount of infrastructure, then again, I only, I would think common sense would be you, if you have too many buildings, you're paying for electricity, heating, air, a lot for buildings that are underutilized or not utilized at all. We would have to do the analysis to see why, why we're deciding to keep those buildings. Are we expecting a student growth? Do we see, you know, the kindergarten class is, is so large that in 10 years, we're going to need these, these facilities? Just do that kind of analysis as to whether we kept buildings, whether we built new buildings, or whether we just continued to maintain our current infrastructure because it was fulfilling our needs.
Thank you.
Sir?
So, my question is, what, what is your vision for the next five to 10 years for the Lynchburg Public School System?
So, to prepare for today, I just kind of went back, as far back as the, some of the school sites that I was looking through would go back and it would, to 2005. And since 2005 to today, we've, just our standardized scores and had just declined. You have a couple of good years and then, but it's been a steady decline. So, that's what I would want to find is the why. Why the steady decline? Is it, is our population, you know, obviously, with COVID, you know, the psychologists said, you know, basically, kids have lost a year of school, right? So, they, you have a ninth grader that should be in 11th grade that technically still now, I guess, is 10th grade is by, by what the, the experts are saying. So, I would just try to find the why, like why the steady decline? And why the times where, where there would be an increase? Like, what did we do differently during that time? And can we apply that to today? And, and just kind of see where the excellence, the standards of excellence caused this school to outperform here, like the why. Just do the analysis, really, to break down the root cause as to why one school is more successful than another, right? And, and see what we can do for best practices and what we can do for, you know, I'm in District One, but, but sitting on the school board, I would imagine, well, not imagine, I know my vote or my thought would affect more than just District One. So, that's where I would want to see the vision is, is what can we do to improve the standard of education? What can we do to improve the standard of knowledge as being retained throughout the year so that our students are successful at the end of the year on the tests? And then, the why of the steady student decline is, is our population shrinking and, or is it, or is our population growing but our students are declining? And then, again, why, why are we losing students? So, that, that's kind of where my vision is, is what we can do to get, just help improve, continue to improve the education that our children are getting within the LCS.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for being here. I'm glad you're with us.
Thank you, sir.
How much emphasis, if any, should Lynchburg City Schools place on diversity, equity, and inclusion?
The, well, our school system should reflect our population, right? As far as diversity goes. So, that, that's where, what does, what, how is Lynchburg, where are demographics, you know? So, that should be reflective of our schools. And, but, so, and inclusion, again, I think, you know, we have zero bullying, so I don't, the inclusion and the diversity are there, the equity, rather than, you know, I would, I would want to raise up rather than bring everyone down. And we're, we're hearing, you know, like honors courses and what have you are being, are done away with. And just, just continue to build up our students and, and challenge them rather than, you know, try to, try to take away things for the more advanced students because that just drives, I believe, the, has a drive and desire to improve. I know that was me. When I was, when I was in high school, middle school, I was not a very good student. I happened, I think, I went to college only because I happened to be good in math, for whatever reason it clicked. Everything else was, I was a steady C-minus student. And, but I got to college and then something clicked, something changed for me. And, and then my drive to, to improve and to, to just continue my knowledge was there. I went from, again, barely a C student in high school to almost a B student, or excuse me, a C student to a B student in college. And then, for my master's degrees programs, I've, you know, a 3.9 and a 4.0. So, it's just the constant drive to get better.
So, I kind of want to drill down on the question. Should Lynchburg City Schools devote any staff time at all to explicit DEI programs?
Devote any time as to, hey, hey, students, we're all diverse, we're all here, treat each other nicely, treat each other with respect, and let's get to learning.
Let me, let me put it a different way. So, Centra, Liberty, other big institutions in town have offices of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Should Lynchburg City Schools have something similar?
I think the, although I don't think it's necessary, I do see that there are, there are there are certain groups of people that may need to ensure they're getting fairly treated. Now, I, I think we should all be fairly treated no matter what, and that should be on administrators to admit, to, to do that. But if our administrators can't do that and they need someone else to do that, I, but I still don't agree with having specifically calling out, because the more that you call out the, a difference and you focus on the difference, everyone notices the difference versus we're all-
So, the, the answer would be no.
I-
Is that, is that fair to say?
I don't think, I, well, I think, I've said, I, there are, there are benefits, but I don't think it's necessary, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, David, we appreciate it. I like your, I like your shirt, it's really nice.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
As well as your jacket.
I appreciate it.
Do you have khakis as well?
Yes, sir.
Oh, wow, we could be twins today, okay? Excuse me. Could you articulate your understanding of the role of a school board member? Considering there's so much information to degrade the school system, as far as so much information, what would you be doing as a school board member to accentuate the positive and do you understand the role of a school board member?
All right, thank you for that. Well, again, as a school board member, setting the vision, setting the outlook, and working with the superintendent to accomplish those goals. So, that's kind of where my, my thoughts would be, would be, what's the vision? How are we going to accomplish that? What is the superintendent doing to help us do that in the schools? And then, further on down, is what are the schools doing to accomplish the superintendent and the school board's goals? So, just continue to work that kind of bottom-up and top-down mission vision and goals.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
One of the main things I'm looking for in a school board appointees relates to the foundation for the disciplines in academics, and I would define those as math, history, science, and English. You briefly hovered over those a few moments ago. But I do believe that we need to put strong emphasis behind those programs and those disciplines. So, how are you, as a advocate for putting a strong emphasis on the core disciplines of academics, math, history, science, and English, at least from my perspective? How also will you strive for accountability to achieve those, those goals or rates of success?
Thank you for that. Again, I think when, when you have, well, our, our current school system, we teach a subject, we give you a test, how well you tested on that, then it's a reflection of how you understand the information being told as well as how it was given to you. So, from there, I, I think, again, what, what teachers specifically are the students getting good grades in and retaining knowledge and why? What is the root cause of that? What are certain teachers or schools not doing the same? Why? They're just getting to the root causes of the, if, if the same curriculum is being taught and not being retained as well, you know, why? Is, is the building, is it hot? Is it uncomfortable? Is it, are the teachers different? Are the teachers, you know, not as good or better or what have you? Just getting to the root cause, really, I think, is the root of that. But to your point, again, that, that's the focus, is the, the math, the English, the sciences, to, to continue to improve our students and get our, those standardized score tests up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Member Nelson?
Yes. There has been a fairly recent trend for some school divisions to de-emphasize, if not eliminate, standardized testing and focus more on a more holistic instructional approach to education. And some colleges and universities actually are not considering SAT scores. They are looking at grades and recommendations and activities. What is your perspective with regard to whether Lynchburg City Schools should adopt that perspective or not, if you have one?
Ultimately, whatever you do, there needs to be a standard because we have to have a standard to achieve. If there's no standard, then everyone has achieved the standard, right? So, whether you've got, whether you retained any knowledge through the school year or whether you retained at all, if, if there is no standard, then everyone was successful. So, I think there needs to be some sort of a standard that we're all working towards. And the curriculum needs to be, again, going to meet a certain milestone and a certain standard and providing the, the time and the resources and the, the availability of classes to accomplish that.
Are there ways to accomplish that and set that standard and evaluate compliance with that standard other than through standardized testing with, and now I understand, everything is on computer. So, you've got to have, a student has to have some proficiency and comfort in dealing with the computer, which many students are, are not comfortable. They're probably all pretty comfortable with cell phones and iPhones, but-
That's right.
Actual, actual computer online testing is not something that all of our students have familiarity with. Do you, do you see that as a factor or not?
So, for me, I'll go back to just me. I know how I am. I did okay on my SAT. When it comes to standardized tests, I, you know, don't do very well. I retain knowledge, but I'm like, oh, is it A or B? They're kind of similar, right? Which is the best answer? I, I think this one's the best answer. Well, my thought was wrong. I had the knowledge, I just didn't know what they were asking or what they wanted me to get to, right? So, some people do well on standardized tests and some people don't. And it's about being, but, but the learning objectives, you can accomplish those, I'm, I'm proof of that. So, there, but there has to be a standard. I, I didn't do well on the SAT because I was that standard. I was able to get into a college and from college, I was able to make good grades in some classes and not. But I, but I got to the end because I was constantly being graded upon and striving towards a certain standard. If I didn't master a subject, then, you know, I wouldn't got, I would not have gotten my degree. So, I, I just, ultimately, there has to be a standard. Whatever innovative way that new science or computers or whatever changes, because I'm a, as you see here, I'm ink guy, I don't have a computer or my phone, that's not me. I, I need to hold it and read it. But, but I still, every day, my, my job is on computers. So, I have to overcome that and figure a way to be successful.
I admit and confess, I'm an ink guy too. And computers is not something that makes me completely comfortable. But on that point, and in the context of what you were talking about earlier about equity, Lynchburg is a first city. And like many first cities, we have significant pockets of poverty throughout. And there's some schools that suffer because of the poverty rates in those schools and the achievement gaps that correlate to that poverty population. And it, it creates a great disconnect between the opportunities and the progress made by some students in the classroom and others who pose greater challenges. Given that, if standardized testing or any testing is done on a computer and a child doesn't have a computer in their home, is not familiar with computers, and understands the nuances of, of use of computer, then that child has a significant disadvantage from children who are and have been exposed and access computer equipment for, since they were six months old, maybe. Do you see, do you have any ideas of where that challenge may present itself in delivering quality instruction to all of our children from pre-K to graduation in Lynchburg School Division?
Sure. Just overall in general. So, we, we have children come to school, they learn throughout the day, they go home and do homework. And I will, I agree, maybe some students don't have the computer at the home. But, but again, the, I think, the, again, the budgets, the, the justifications, all tying back to those specific milestones and goals, we should be able to, during the day, provide the resources to give, from the time of kindergarten up through high school, the comfortability or just the, the access to computers, right? So, I think while they're at, at school, we, those are the things that we should be teaching them. They're learning, just as everyone, right? And I understand there are some schools that are in lower privileged areas. My, I'm a product of a single parent. My mom, she worked three jobs and, you know, so I, and it was just to live in an apartment. you know, so I, and it was just to live in an apartment. And, and I say that, but, but she worked hard, and I hardly ever saw her. But, so I, I don't come from the best to do. Um, but the schools that I was in, they, they were great teachers, and they're, and I, they, they challenged me, and they pushed me to learn, um, and, and here I am.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your, your insights, and applaud your successes.
Thanks.
Dr. Twitty?
Thank you. Um, I always wonder why people wanna give so much time. I did it for school board, and, cause it's a lot of, uh, time that you're giving away investment.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have children that have attended, uh, public schools, and particularly Lynchburg City Public Schools?
So Lynchburg City Public Schools, no. I, when I moved here, I was in Forest, and my kids were in public school. Um, and while they were in public school, um, in Bedford County, um, th- they, they were given a computer, they were given a tablet, and the teacher was on his or her phone, and the students were expected to teach themselves. Um, they, they did that for a year. Um, and I put them, I chose to, to double pay, right? Pay taxes, and send them to a private school, cause I wanted them to be taught and instructed, and to, um, be mentored and guided in, in their education. Uh, so I did that. Um, and then I, I moved, um, to Lynchburg, and my, and then there was COVID. Again, everyone was online and not in the classroom. Um, LCA was in the classroom and teaching, so I, I decided to keep my children there. And, and because of that, and, um, and, and, you know, just being honest with the, some of the scores and the, when you compare the two, I, I've kept my kids in LCA. Um, but to the, to your point, is, I, I don't want other people to have to do that. I wanna get involved. If not me, then who?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And just to follow up, um, how it, do you compare, uh, private education accountability, and the ability to select students, uh, who enters their schools through application process versus students' open door policy with the public education system, and the education that has to be provided to students wherever they come from, and in whatever capacity they arrive at?
How do I compare those two educations?
The two standards of accountability-
Okay.
Between private education accountability-
Okay.
Who are private educators accountable to, because you're a parent who's experiencing that-
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, versus the public accountability level, uh, in the school system, public school system.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I know, um, again, just based off the experience that I, that I've gained over the last couple of years, um, is that the students are, or excuse me, the, uh, teachers are in one-year contracts, and if they aren't performing, um, to a, to the level that they need to be doing to teaching their children, and it's based off of parent feedback, as well as how they're, how people are doing in, in scores and things of that, then, then that could decide whether they have a, a job next year. So it's that, again, they're held to that standard as to, to teach and, uh, mentor their students. Um, and I don't think that's the case in public schools. I, I mean, whether you are, have students that do well, or that don't do well, you, you've still, the next year, um, I, you, obviously there's administrative actions and things that can happen, but for, for the most part, the, it, it doesn't come into play as much, um, as in private schools.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I guess it, uh, you know, the, I guess several things jump out, but, but one specifically, you know, when the schools were closed, I think everybody in hindsight kinda realizes how terrible that was. You mentioned the one-year learning loss. We have incumbents on the school board that aren't seeking office again. I, I think lots of people realize how bad those decisions were. Um, you mentioned the one-year learning loss by having to try to teach through online, or masks, or, uh, you know, from afar. Um, I think it's very, uh, it, it says a lot that you're wanting to improve the education for others that may not have the means. And lots of people just say, hey, forget it. I'm, you know, I'm going elsewhere. But there are lots of people that don't have that ability. And so I appreciate your desire to stand up and to try to make, uh, to, to, to improve. When we look back at the, the learning loss, we heard from teachers back then that didn't think it was a good thing to close schools and have them virtual. If you were on the school board back then, do you think you would have voted to close the schools and have them virtual, or masks, or, or, why did you, apparently you did vote, because you had, you had to pay to send your children, or a student elsewhere. Why do you think they didn't, why do you think a lot of these school boards, and Lynchburg specifically, closed the schools to the in-person learning? And how would you have done different?
Thank you for that. Um, I know a lot of school boards were, were basically directed what they were going to have to do. So they had to live with, you know, regulations from above them, right? Um, but when there were choices, um, you could, from the, from the time that it was mandatory to the time there was a choice, I have to think that you would could kinda get a good idea. So what I would, i- if we had had a choice, then I would have looked at that data, that we can now, hindsight being 2020, and, and, um, advocate for the children to go, uh, in, in residence with their teacher, and be mentored. Cause again, a lot, the instruction is one thing, but a lot of the relationship, and the things of, of me being here versus, I could have done this on a telephone interview, that we probably wouldn't have had the same interactions because of, of that distance, really. Um, so that's, the, the relationship, the mentorship, and, um, the instruction are all part of the in-person, uh, perspective and experience that I think, um, benefits our children. So that, that's where I would have done it differently. I would have advocated for, when we could. And again, there were, there were certain restrictions that said you can't, but when we had the opportunity to go, I, that, I would have advocated for going.
So how do we now make up for that year of learning loss? You said somebody was ninth grade, and all of a sudden they're a junior, and they're really only like a 10th grader. What do we do to make up for that learning loss now, going forward?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, again, I, I think it, it goes back to accountability, um, for, for everyone, whether it be students, administrators, it's that accountability. We've, we've got to have the accountability for the, for the teachers to try to, to help bridge a gap that there was. We also have to have the students accountable for their learning, you know, so, um, looking back, I, well, there was like several hundred children that just never logged on to their, their computers, uh, during COVID. And so they, it was just lost. They, we lost them. And, um, so, but it's, it's that accountability too, right? So I think we, we all know that they didn't log on, but why weren't we being more, um, active in the, hey, you haven't logged on in a week, versus, hey, you haven't logged on all year? Cause at that point, it's kinda, it's kinda hard to recover. Um, but, uh, but seeing what those issues are, um, you know, cause again, everyone may not have Wi-Fi or available. They may have to go to the public library, you know, it's just, finding those root causes out, I think, as, as, as administrators and as school boards, we can try to change the future to, um, to bridge those gaps.
Thank you.
So I'll switch gears a little bit. Um, an effective school board is a balanced organization of people who set their own, uh, who set their own priorities and/or agendas aside, and work solely for what's the best for the school division. How do you relate to this?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I have horrible hearing from all the jet engines. Could you say that again?
So I, let me get this. I, I mumble sometimes, right? I said, an effective school board is a balanced organization of people who set their own priorities and/or agendas aside, and work for what is best for the school division. So I, my question to you is, you know, how do you relate to this? Are you able to set your own agendas and priorities aside, to work for the betterment of the school system?
Certainly. Uh, uh, you know, I may think, um, that the water is clear versus blue. I can set my agenda aside and say, let's teach children about water, and, and what it, what it is makes up of the earth, and things like that. So it's, it's, but it's gotta be tied to those objectives, right? Objectives and milestones. As long as we are, uh, putting standards in place to help children get, meet, um, be taught, and meet certain objectives and milestones, um, then, then I think, again, and, and this, this is gonna sound weird, but my, my agenda is to help children succeed. So to put that aside, I won't put that aside.
In person, yeah.
Right? That, I will keep that agenda front and center, if I'm a school board member. Whatever that takes. And, but, personal other thoughts that may not need to be in the school system, I can put those aside, as long as we are putting our children first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lightning round.
Very quick. Um, Corinne, what are your views on school choice? You, you mentioned earlier about sort of paying double, right? Um, what are your views on school choice? Should, for example, tuition, taxpayer-provided tuition funds be able to be transferred to, say, private institutions, or charter schools, or other forms of education, or even, you know, a tax credit for folks who homeschool their kids? What are your views?
Sure. Um, ultimately, quickly, I think it, it could be a good thing. Competition is always good, right? So it's, um, if, because I would love, we, somebody talked about having the means. I, sending my children to school hurts. There is, I could definitely do something differently with that money. I could invest in, I could save for college versus their, their middle school, elementary school, and high school years, right? So I could do something with that. Now, if I could take the money and, and really decide which school I was going to send my child to, then again, that competition in the system only benefits the child, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for coming, David.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it. Um, in our community, Lynchburg has the highest poverty rate in our region, over 20%. Uh, most of the homes are in 50% of, of single families. As a school board member, how does it address the education process? And as a school board member, what would you do to address that?
Um, so I think it's directly tied, in my opinion, right? So we, we've seen a steady, steadily, a steady decline in scores in our school standards and meeting those standards. And, and so as we see the decline, we see a rise in poverty. I think, uh, the more you challenge your students, the more you educate your students, and hold them to those standards, the, the more that they have the drive to, to keep going. Again, at some point, a student has given up. We've lost, we, someone said we lost several hundred, I think, uh, several hundred students. At some point, they gave up. Why? You know, and, if, if they would have had the opportunity and, and given the tools to succeed, they would have kept going. I know that. Um, and I think ultimately, that benefits the economy and the, 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 the income of, of those people. So, um, I, I think it's, I think they're directly tied. So, and again, all the more reason why, again, my agenda is our children first. But if we can motivate our children to love learning, to drive and thrive in those environments, um, the sky is literally the limit for those children.
Good, thank you, sir.
Dr. Mofrelde?
Last year, I had asked you about collective bargaining. I would assume that, uh, policy stance would be the same as to last year, so I'll, I'll ask a different question, if that's okay. Um, I, I'm a big proponent of finding more ways to get our business community and vocational schools back into the education system. I really do think that's an opportunity for the public education system to shine, and create a little bit more of that incentive for folks to specifically choose the public education realm, because of that partnership with the locality and some of the businesses there. Walk me through, if you can, uh, your vision, and potential opportunities where we could actually bring in the business community to teach students how to be business-ready by the time they graduate. I mean, I, I see your employer, what would it look like for a 17-year-old to get, um, Azure Fundamentals, AZ900 certified by the time they're 18-years-old, walking out of EC glass?
Um, well, if we have my company do it, it'd be, it's assured. No, what I love, so real quick to your point, is I, shameless plug, and I hope, hope they don't mind, but CloudFit Software, we are being involved in the communities. I, I think we're, we're, with the Jubilee Center, we are, I, and part of that team is gonna go to the Jubilee Center and, and get students motivated and interested in the IT, um, coding, STEM, get them excited about that, and it'd help them, um, get better. And I, I love that about my company. Um, I think, I think we, I think by getting the work, the employers involved in the education, they are ultimately benefiting themselves, because they will get the student that they helped train, right? So I think, I, I love that idea. I think it's, it's, it's awesome, and, and I enjoy doing it. And I, and you know, I, I was a, a STEM mentor. Um, I, my class graduated a couple of weeks ago. And I love seeing from the time that they came in, not knowing how to use a piece of software, to creating a website, and having dropdowns, and it could do all kinds of things. Just the learning that, and to see that motivation from the time they, they walked in knowing nothing, to the time they left, and they designed things themselves, uh, with mentorship, and, and from our folks. Um, I love that. It was, it was motivating.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we only have about 30 seconds, I think. Are there any questions that you have for us?
No, ma'am. I, I would just like to say, again, thank you for your time and attention. I know I was a bit of a, um, difficult one, and, and, uh, Mr., our Dr. Day, um, swapped with me, so he allowed me to be here today, cause I literally in my, the next slot, I couldn't have been here. So I would not have been able to be here. So I'm sorry that I was a pain in the butt. I heard there was emails, so I just wanna say thank you for dealing with me, and I, I appreciate your questions, and thank you for what you're doing, because again, you're gonna choose our next school, school board members. And, and that will, um, you will provide the vision and the, the long-term impact of our students. Um, so I just wanna say thank you for doing that, and, and I hope to be one of those members for District One. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.